All right, we're going to go ahead and call the city commission meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started with roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denher.
Here.
Right, number two under routine business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 22nd and the special meeting of August 29th, 2022. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second in any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? All those in favor approving the minutes and special meeting minutes say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? Number three is schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second in any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. All right, moving on, we have two, I always say they're special. Every proclamation we do is special, that's why we do them, right? But two special proclamations to do tonight, so we'll start with the first one, is for the 2022 Welcoming Week. Whereas Welcoming Week is about bringing neighbors together across the lines of difference to build relationships and work together on shared goals. And whereas the city of Yankton is home to people of all backgrounds, including those who were not born here but now call it home. Whereas new residents are a vital part of our community, along with our longtime residents, bringing ideas, starting businesses, serving in civic roles, working in critical industries, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we value. Whereas our community must strive to create a culture and policies that ensure everyone can belong and thrive, addressing disparities, countering hate, understanding history, and helping neighbors come together. Whereas disparities in life outcomes exist and racism, xenophobia, and all other forms of exclusion threaten our collective well-being, health, and prosperity. And whereas by fostering a welcoming environment for all, we enhance Yankton's health, economic prosperity, and well-being for the current and future generations. Whereas the city of Yankton stands as a beacon of freedom and opportunity. Now therefore, we, the city commission and the city of Yankton, do hereby encourage business leaders, civic groups, government agencies, and community institutions to make the region a more welcoming place for new and long-term residents alike. And I, Mayor Stephanie Moser, do hereby proclaim the week of September 12th, 2022, as Welcome Week. So, congratulations.
Yay, that was awesome, thank you.
So, we already took our pictures, so don't think I'm sliding Sarah at all, or the folks that came as part of this proclamation tonight. While I'm bringing it over to Sarah, I will ask for her to share some words with us.
Yeah, hi, I know actually, and have had the pleasure to work with and alongside a lot of you on a lot of different things. For those of you that don't know me, hello. My name is Sarah Brant, thank you. My name is Sarah Brant. I'm president of Connecting Cultures. Connecting Cultures has been around for about five years now. I feel like it gets better and better, even with the years that I come before you, the fact that, you know, the first year I maybe knew a couple, and now I know like 75, 80% of you from things that we've done together, so it's been great. Connecting Cultures just, you know, we love, everyone, we love Yankton, and you guys are all here working really hard to represent and make the city a better place, and we want it to be a place where everyone wants to move to and live in and belong in, and we're just excited to be here to promote Yankton. So, yeah, this is Welcoming Week, this is year three that we've been able to proclaim this, so this is exciting. We have our welcome stickers that I'm sure you've seen around town that say "Welcome" in about 20 different languages, languages that are present here, and even if it's not a language that you speak, maybe it's present in your heritage, whether it's German, Norwegian, Czech, but also Lakota, Spanish, Swahili, we do have African refugees here that speaks Swahili, so we're excited for people to see "Welcome." And beyond the sticker, it's also a big stencil that we can spray paint on an entryway. We had the pleasure to add it to the community library this year, they, we had it added there, and also the United Way New Office on Broadway, so they were both very excited. We collaborated with Mount Marty students to do so, and any other business organization that's looking to have that at your entryway, contact Connecting Cultures via Facebook, and we can get you hooked up and schedule out what, how to get that for you guys. And then we just have a couple events coming up this week, being Welcoming Week. Yankton Thrive is putting on a meet and mingle. We want people to feel welcome, whether it's new term, new residents, come out, meet some people, long-term residents, come out, welcome some new people to our community, just chat. That is at Mount Marty, at the Simples Arena, but right before the volleyball game, Yankton Thrive is letting you come in for free, free admission to the girls' volleyball game, so come out for free, 5 to 7 p.m. And then Saturday, we are really excited, Market at the Meridian, we're partnering with them, Tamale Fest, tamales, I don't know if you've ever heard of a tamale, but they are Hispanic food, and I'm going to say Hispanic because different countries make them differently. We have some of our chefs here, wave, Sandra, she's in the glasses. They make them differently in different countries, so we have here Mexican representation and Guatemalan, and they just have a couple different ingredients, different style of making it. It is a lot of work to make them, so they are putting in a lot of hours, and we're excited to bring that to the community. Before, it was like you had to know somebody to know somebody to get a good tamale, but we are going to have it at the market, you guys can come out and have them. If you're like, if you know your family wants some, you can preorder with us, so we're excited to bring that to the market, and thank you for Welcoming Week.
Thank you for that, Sarah, and to you and your group for all the good work you're doing in our community. I just really enjoy that, and I'm really glad I can go get a good tamale on Saturday. I'll be there.
I need a taste test.
And Commissioner Villanueva, if you need a taste tester. Thanks for taking one for the team on that, that's awesome. All right, you know, I did this proclamation this morning because I wanted to make sure that we got in front of all of the folks at ABS, and one of the things that I said when I did it this morning is talking about a group in town that really fits the vision of our city commission, but I feel like we have both groups who got a proclamation tonight that are really good groups that are providing our residents with spaces to create opportunities to grow and thrive, and engage in our community and learn, and from each other, and I just think it's so exciting that it just falls on the same night with both of these organizations. So the next one we have is a proclamation for Direct Support Professionals. Whereas Direct Support Professionals deliver individualized services and support for South Dakotans with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And whereas there are nearly 3,300 Direct Support Professionals working for 20 community service provider agencies in the South Dakota Developmental Center. And whereas Direct Support Professionals support individuals with disabilities to earn prevailing wages and foster careers in their communities. And whereas communities are strengthened and enriched by the inclusion of all members of society regardless of their disability. And whereas Direct Support Professionals Week is an opportunity to recognize the dedicated, hardworking, and compassionate professionals who support individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and to thank them for their service. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Moser, Mayor of Yankton, South Dakota, do proclaim the week of September 12th, 2022, as Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week here in Yankton. So congratulations to them. Hang on one second, Sam. Okay. All right, we do have Sam Mason here tonight from Ability Building Services, and I'm so excited she can join us. We did ask if she could come and share with the commission all of the great work. One of the things I was able to do is sit in on a, what I call it, an accreditation meeting or something like that, and was amazed to hear all the great work that they do out there for residents of our community, and so thank you for being here tonight, Sam, and I would turn it over to you to let us know a little bit about this week and the types of services that you provide.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Mayor Moser. So my name is Sam Mason, and I am the Day Habilitation Supervisor at Ability Building Services. I've worked there for about 18 years, ever since we moved to South Dakota, and I think it's been pretty fantastic. This week, we are celebrating Direct Support Professional Week. It's a federally recognized celebration of Direct Support Professional workforce, also known as DSPs, who support the people with intellectual and physical disabilities that get services through the different community support providers in South Dakota and across the country. We started the kickoff this morning, as Mayor Moser said, with her reading the proclamation, I'm so sorry, at ABS to help recognize the contribution of all the work the DSPs do. They are truly the backbone of ABS, and they support people to achieve their dreams. So ABS currently employs approximately 130 support staff who help provide services to just about 130 people here in Yankton. ABS is one of 20 community support providers throughout South Dakota. We are a private nonprofit that receives federal and state funding to operate. The really nice thing is much of that funding is turned over within the Yankton community through the purchasing power by staff and people who are supported when they spend money locally for goods and services. DSPs support people to have the lives they choose and have the opportunities that they desire. DSPs might be helping somebody with something as simple as grocery shopping, or budgeting, planning for different events, going to see their friends and family, going out to do things in the community, or just meeting basic daily needs. There are several different departments that work in ABS. Some supports are offered in their homes, some people are assisted during the day in day hab. We also offer supported employment services. So ABS has assisted approximately 60 people that currently have jobs in the Yankton community, and they're very dedicated and appreciated employees. So if you see somebody, make sure you tell them hi, because they're all usually pretty friendly. There is also several people who have services throughout the organization that belong to local churches, different community groups, different advocacy groups, and also people who volunteer and spend their time giving back to the community where they live. All of this is made possible by the support of the staff that work at ABS, and the ideas that are generated by the people that receive the help, who choose what it is they want to do. So we want to thank you very much for the proclamation and helping us to acknowledge the DSPs for all the hard work done to provide the opportunity for enriched lives for the citizens of Yankton that get services through ABS. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, thanks again, Sam, and so again, thank you so much to ABS and our Direct Support Professionals and Connecting Cultures for everything that you, everything you all do for our community and our residents, like I said, to learn, engage, and thrive. We couldn't be a great community without all of you, so thank you. All right, moving on, next on our agenda is the City Manager's Report, so I would turn this over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. A number of things to share with you this evening. First, want to visit a little bit about follow-up from your special meeting and some of the things we heard. I did forward you on Friday a city commission public information inventory, and for those of you who had not returned theirs, gave you a hard copy this evening as well. That's so commissioners can choose what personal information they would like for contact information to be placed on our city website. If you'll take some time to think about that and get that back to us in our office, we'll get that up on the website. And if you have any questions about that, you can contact me, and we'll work through that together. Also, at our next meeting on September 26th, to regular business time, we plan to conduct the dashboard. So some of you remember that every year, annually, we've gone through the dashboard of sort of commission roles, city management roles, staff roles, et cetera, and then some, some of the unique things that we need to have you keep in mind as elected officials and when you act as a quasi-judicial body. So we're going to be working with Ross to beef that up, and we'll be talking through that at your regular meeting. Later this evening, you may be setting a work session for that same evening at 6 p.m. Kyle Goodmanson and his staff will be with us, providing an update on the improvements to the wastewater plant project, and also talking about delivery method for the upcoming project. So many of you know we've been working on construction manager at risk, understanding that as a delivery process, and trying to see if that would be the best way to pursue that particular project. So we've had some staff travel to other communities, talk with other communities that have utilized the CIMAR process, and we'd like to talk with you about it. That is going to be a very heavy PowerPoint, so to say, so to speak. We do have a draft of it already. Kyle would like to invite any of you next week, prior to it being presented publicly, if you'd like to come and spend some time with him and his staff to better digest that. We're a little bit nervous that, you know, we might get through the PowerPoint, but then may not have a lot of time for discussion, so want to invite that to you. We'll send out an email reminder, but of course, it wouldn't be a full group, it would be one-on-one meetings with Kyle and his staff to walk through that, if people are interested in hearing more about that prior to September 26th at the work session. We will have one question for you at that work session that we're looking direction, direction from, and that's whether you feel the way we do, in that CIMAR, we think in this bidding environment, in this economy, may be the right way to go for this project. So we would like to get that clarity from you all, prior to continuing to move forward on that project. So we'll send you some reminders on those things, but just wanted you to be aware of some kind of heavy, heavy agenda items coming, coming forward to you. Next, want to talk a little more about this evening's agenda. Adam Haberman can't be with us this evening, so I took my crash course in engineering this morning, and Todd and Dave promised to help me, and we also have Stockwell Engineers here. So we'll see how you do, how we do with those items, but I do think we, I, we have a good handle on all the memos that he's provided, so he apologizes for that, but just could not be here this evening. Let's see, who is our, oh, Commissioner Villanueva, you're our official taste tester?
Absolutely.
Okay, we've got, I've got some assignments in for you. Sunday, the 18th is the airport breakfast from 8 until noon, so I'm aware there's always lots of people, fun, and pancakes. And then, since we won't see you again, certainly you'll either be in front of or behind perhaps the grill on September 25th for the fire department breakfast at Fire Station 2, also 8 to 12. So if you like breakfast, airports and firemen, the next couple weeks are right, right up your alley, but I wanted to let the public know about that. Also, Chief Linky wanted me to talk a little bit about the event that happened this weekend. We had the Home Run Derby, which was, you know, he wouldn't go so far to say it was police versus fire department. He wanted to talk about public safety versus the softball folks, and, but he did point out reluctantly that he thinks that Preston, or perhaps Cole, may have actually won in terms of how many home runs hit, but, but, and overall, he thought public safety did very well, but of course, the point of that event was just to have fun, and we'll see what happens in basketball season. Got some young folks on the roster at the police department, so we'll have to see what happens. Let me see, I wanted to talk a little bit more about some of this information that I already gave you, commission, but that the public may be interested in. We have received some more interest from the public requesting that they serve on the Summit Activities Center Committee that we talked about at the last meeting. We're also sending out this notice in the October utility bill, because we heard from the public that folks would like to get some information that way, so we're going to update them on your decision and direction on the Summit Activities Center, as well as give them the opportunity to serve on that committee. So I'm thinking you're going to have a big roster of people that you can take a look at to serve on that committee, and we'll also be asking commission as well, of course, if they have, you have representatives you would like to serve on that committee. However, we don't want to wait, we heard that as well, like, you know, don't wait to change some things, let's get some things going right now. So, so some of the things we're going to be doing is bring back the programming to the pre-pandemic levels at the Summit Activities Center, adjust our rates to the pre-pandemic levels. That would require your action, however, so that would be something that you would need to act on, and not saying that that would be the only thing that happens with rates, but at least bringing them back to where we were before, before the pandemic. Working on a membership survey, so that when we form that committee, we have some input from users on what their views are about the Summit Activities Center. We are going to ask that an adult be assisting kids between the ages of 11 and 14 in the weight room, because we've had some requests from our membership about the safety of young folks in the weight room who are of a very young age. We'd like to also utilize the Yankton College office space, which is no longer being utilized by Yankton College for some fitness classes, and then also start, we've started to talk with the youth sports groups with their, with their interest, about their interest of potentially developing a relationship with the YMCA, so that's all been going on. We also, along with the Summit Activities Center, had some specific emails, quite a few, and requests from, you won't be surprised, the pickleball folks. So Colleen's collected those comments, I believe they're either in your OneDrive folder, or we'll put them in your OneDrive folder, and they're interested in more pickleball indoor playtime. So we have some access to the court in, at the Summit Activities Center, so Todd will be working with the school there and within the confines of our agreement, finding some times where we may have some more indoor pickleball space. That's especially important for those pre-city hall hours, so, you know, early in the mornings, there isn't any indoor pickleball that we're aware of in the community until we open city hall at, at 8:00. So that's coming down the pipe as well. That's what I wanted to talk about from our last meeting. There are, at the end of our meeting this evening, I invite the commission to take a look at the long-sleeved shirts for when our meeting room isn't as warm, or when you're out and about this winter and fall. I can explain to you after the meeting, but if you'd like a long-sleeved polo, it won't have the Riverboat Days icon, it will have the city of Yankton logo on it. If you're interested in that, we will get those ordered for you. And also wanted to thank Sergeant Rob Beekler and his staff for allowing me on a ride-along over Labor Day weekend. I am not cut out for it, let's say that, but I had a really nice experience with Sergeant, with Officer Cameron Voight, for those of you who know Cameron, really nice young, young man in our police department. We were responding to a call, and a resident in the neighborhood ran up to him and embraced him, I mean, literally embraced him, and I thought, well, that doesn't happen everywhere in the world, so that's just a sample of the caliber of folks we have. But we had a lot of fun, and I learned a lot, and I'm on day shift, I think, because I don't think I can do night shift anymore, but thanks, chief, for allowing that. Happy to answer questions, mayor or commissioners, and if not, I'll let you get to your business, because I know you have a lot on your agenda this evening.
Are there any questions for City Manager Leon? None from that side, none from that side. I will clarify one thing, chief, and I do understand that technically, if the police department won, there is an assist by the fire department, because they weren't killing the balls until they borrowed a bat from the fire department, so I think they at least get the assist. Okay, I had to clarify that. Little rumor I heard, might have been in my house, but I heard it, so, okay. I'd had to tease you, okay.
Mayor Moser, before we move on to, I have to give a special shout-out to the Mount Marty softball team and coaches. They were so helpful yesterday with the Home Run Derby, and we couldn't have done it without them, so I want a special shout-out to them.
Awesome. I hear some of them were knocking them out of the park, too, so, all right. All right, now is the time and place on the agenda for public appearances for somebody that would like to appear in front of the commission on something not on the agenda Seeing no movement, we will move on to the consent agenda. Number one is the setting of the date of September 26, 2022 at 6 p.m. here in our meeting room for the next work session for the Yankton City Commission, as addressed by City Manager Leon during her update. And number two is to establish September 26, 2022 is the date of a public hearing on the request for a special events malt beverage on, on-sale retailer's license for three days, October 7, 8, and 9, 2022, from the National Field Archery Association Foundation. Morgan Palmer, Marketing and Events Coordinator, and that's located at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
Move the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, moving on then to old business. And number one, can I do A and B together? I was going to ask that. We have one motion, or does it have to be a separate motion for A and B?
You can do it together.
Together, perfect, thank you. So, agreed? Thank you. Okay. Now, A is a second reading and public hearing of ordinance 1064, an ordinance to appropriate monies for defraying the necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Yankton, South Dakota, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023, and providing for the levy of annual taxes for all funds created by the ordinance within said city. And part B is consideration of Resolution 22-40, adopting the 2023 fiscal year budget and directing the city manager to administer the budget as required by state law. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve both as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Amy, I would have you, or Al would clarify one thing that I know we talked a little bit about on the media briefing on Friday, is just the understanding of what was decided at our special meeting with the summit, and that the budget is still good for as presented in the first reading and the second reading, that our special meeting didn't change anything because the monies were already appropriated accordingly, but could you clarify for the public and for everybody else, because that was brought up, I know, during the media?
Correct. When we were putting the budget together, we were still in a lot of discussion modes, so to speak, on how we were going to operate the SAC, and we weren't far enough along any of those discussions to really have a good idea of how to change the budget. So the budget was presented as it was last year, as far as running the facility, so again, even though there was discussions after that about changing, since it was presented that way, you did not need to change anything. It's budgeted as it was to the, for the previous year.
Thank you for that, Al. Anybody in the public want to address the commission on the 2023 budget? Roll call.
Do you want to ask if there's any comments from the audience?
Oh, I thought I did.
Okay. I apologize.
I gave Charlie every opportunity to stand up. He shook his head, so I asked for a roll.
I answered Charlie's questions already.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Moving on to new business is, number one is the informational presentation and review by Graham Forbes, auditor with Williams &amp; Company PC of the 2020 City of Yankton Comprehensive Annual Fiscal Report. I will ask him to come to the podium, and he's going to walk us through that before I ask for a motion.
I don't want to put any pressure on you, being that this is late.
I don't want to put any pressure on you, being that this is late. I apologize for that, but we do finally have the 2020 audit. But not to put any pressure on you, we have three former mayors in attendance tonight. So that shows you how, how they were really looking forward to this presentation.
Yes, lots of anticipation here, absolutely. So, yeah, as Al pointed out, we are rolling back the calendar here a little bit. What I'm going to run through here quickly is the financials for the 12 months ended December 31 of 2020. So just so we're all clear on, on what timeframe we're looking at here. So yes, I, what I'll do here is I'll kind of flip through, hit a few high points on the financials. I think it looks like everybody's got a copy of the commission in front of you there. So I'll be, I'm going to run through, hit a few, what I guess I would consider high points, but would be more than happy to answer any questions. Feel free to stop me with any questions, comments, and kind of work through that way. So I want to thank Al and his staff for helping us get this information. I know they've had a, you know, just like the, the rest of the country and world, you know, with things has, they have been the last couple of years here, but getting us all the information it takes to, you know, put together the 80, 90-some pages in this document and all we need to conduct our audit procedures and so forth. They're, they're a great help and bend over backwards to get us what we need to make that happen. So thank you to them. So I guess here just quickly, like I said, I'll try and keep this short as I know we got more agenda yet to come here. But on the second page, or page two, on the numbered pages there is, is the second page of our independent auditors' report. And that's kind of, the three pages in that opinion kind of summarize the entire document where we put an opinion on these financial statements. As you can see there on the third paragraph on that second page, in the aptly named opinion paragraph there, is where we, we state that we opine that these financial statements contained in this document are fairly presented in all material respects. So that's a clean, if you will, or unmodified opinion, which is what, exactly what we're after. We did not have to disclaim or provide any kind of adverse or modified opinion. So, you know, good news there. Following, flip the pages, is starting on page four of the management's discussion and analysis. And what that is, is I usually kind of like to refer to that as the Cliff Notes of kind of the 90 pages. If you just want to, you know, hit a few high points, see kind of where are we at compared to the prior year, and then some staff commentary about some of the changes from year to year. I think that's a very, this management's discussion analysis, starting there on page four, is very useful. As you, there's a lot of comparative tables, starting on pages six and seven, where you can see 2020 versus 2019 figures in this case. And as I said, some, some staff discussion on, you know, what are some of those trends they're seeing and movement year to year. So it's very helpful just to kind of get a feel for where were we at compared to last year. From there, I'll move into the financial statements and again, not spend a lot of time, but feel free to stop me. Starting on pages 20 and 21 are where we get into the fund financial statements, where we start to break down the city's operations into the fund structure that they operate. And you'll see there on page 20, the first column is the general fund, which you all well-where is the kind of overall operational fund of the city, where a lot of the unrestricted and other dollars go for general operations. And it kind of be the theme for all the funds I run through, you know, a very positive financial year. You see the general fund towards the bottom of the page, that net change in fund balance. You know, a, you know, good increase there in that net fund balance. As you can see, you know, which is kind of in the for-profit world, is your net income, not really comparable really to income, but I mean, it pulls in a lot of equity and other liquidity type items, but overall showing an increase in fund balance is definitely the direction you want to go. So positive direction there in the general fund in 2020, as well as the special capital improvements fund, that's the next one presented there. You'll see for the pool capital construction fund there on the second column on page 21, a significant decrease to fund balance. However, you know, a very expected and timed reduction in that fund balance, you know, basically in simple terms due to issuing of some bonds in 2019, and then the planned expenditure of said bond revenue on the project in 2020. So nothing to be alarmed there about at all, just kind of the timing of financing and then the actual expenditures on that project. So, but, but I think overall in those governmental funds, a, a very positive financial year for, for those funds. Jumping over to pages 25 and 26 are similar statements for the proprietary funds, which in generalities are the utility funds of the city. And you'll see there, the two we present as major, the water and wastewater fund, again, having solid financial years in 2020, as you can see in that change in net position towards the bottom of the page there. So, you know, nothing out of the ordinary, unexpected report in those funds as well. Starting on page 29 is the notes to the financials. I'm not going to dig deep into any one area there, but there's a lot of detail there on city accounting policy, makeup of outstanding debt, and a lot of other detailed information on some of the other liabilities, capital assets, and a lot of greater detail on some of the other numbers in these financials, like I said, I'm not going to dive into now. But if you're looking to drill into any one area, there's, there's a lot of detailed information found in those notes. Then quickly, I think the next thing I'll jump to is page 55. That's where our budget comparison schedule, we refer to it as, where we take the final budgeted amounts for the period and compare those to the actual figures for the applicable funds for the year and compare, okay, here's what we budgeted, here was our aggregate results, and how do those align? And there's actually some required disclosure there for every set of financial statements for the certain major funds that's required to be disclosed. And I think useful information for the commission as well to see, okay, how did we perform as we budgeted? As you can see, starting there on page 55, the expenditure area is the most probably commonly focused on area of that comparison as the most controllable side of the income versus expense equation on this commission side is the expenditures, you know, as far as the revenues. You know, they're, they're somewhat more controlled by, you know, this commission can't control sales tax revenue or things of those items, but they can control the expenditure side. So that's a side we focus on primarily. And the good news is, they're starting on page 55 and then concluding on 56, for the general fund, every functional area within the general fund budget was under budget for calendar year 2020. So definitely very positive, which I think is kind of the driver for those positive outcomes I referred to as we flipped through those previous financial statements. From there are some more combining schedules, as well as some required supplementary, supplementary information on the city's participation in the South Dakota Public Retirement System, and a bunch of disclosure and detailed information related to that, as well as some of the other post-employment benefits the city has commitments in as well. Again, I'm not going to get into that minutia unless anybody has any questions, but some good detailed information there. From there, continued on, starting on page 64 are the combining and non-major fund financial statements. So the city has a, a fair number of other funds of smaller size and quantity, and there's a required calculation the city is required to abide by, on which are considered major funds and presented in the front part of the document, and those of which do not qualify for that major fund treatment are presented here in the back in the statement of this combining schedule. But if you're looking to kind of drill down into some of the smaller funds of the city, starting on page 64 are those combining statements where you can see the detailed breakdown of those non-major funds, if you're looking for any specific areas to focus in on there. So that continues on for several more pages. And I think the last couple items I'll point out here, starting on page 84, is what's referred to as the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And what that is, is a required schedule that shows all federal dollars the city expended in the year. So as you can see there, due to a couple of different factors, the city had a higher-than-normal, I'll say, expenditure of federal dollars in 2020. You know, due to a couple, the, the main factors were COVID-19 funding that was expended during the period, and then a significant amount of airport improvement program dollars spent in 2020 as well. So you can see towards the bottom of the page, a little over 9.1 million federal dollars are spent by the city in 2020. And with that comes additional auditing requirements that we're required to do to ensure that the city complied with some of the specific compliance requirements that come with those federal dollars, and how they're spent, and internal controls over how those dollars are spent, with some testing that, that's dictated by the OMB and the, and the government, federal government, for the certain requirements and items they require us to look at and, and report on. And that reporting then starts on 86 and continues into 88 and 89. And, and on the federal side, there was no non-compliance or items to note related to the expenditure or use of those federal dollars. So that's, that's positive. You know, with the significant increase in quantity and complexity that comes with those, you know, I think the city should be committed for that. So otherwise, following that is just some more required reporting we have as it relates to governmental auditing standards and a few other required reporting items. So on my not-so-short trip through the financials, I'll, I'll stop there, but would be happy to answer any questions the commission or anyone else has.
Are there any questions of the commission as related to the audit?
So Graham, is the biggest concern what we go through every year where our finance office doesn't have enough staff to go through all the safeguards that you would ideally have in place?
Yes, I think, I think that's pretty fair. As noted there on the bottom of page 90, and as has been probably every year for a number of years, is there, the one finding that is reported in the financials, and again, as, as Nathan pointed out, has been for, ever since a new standard came into play, probably 15 or so years ago now, where what the accounting standards say is if a audit adjustment is required to be proposed to correct any item in the city financials, then the city's internal control over financial reporting must not operate correctly because it wasn't perfect. In not so many words is how the standard is worded. So, so what that is, is exactly what that finding at the bottom of page 90 is pertaining to. And yes, I mean, it, you know, as I started out my talk, you know, the finance department, you know, does a great job of getting us, you know, as good of and as much information as we asked for, you know, but as is the case with nearly every audit we conduct, I mean, it's very, very difficult for a finance department of any size to be perfect, you know, and, and more so, I wish this had some measurement of quantity or things like that, but it doesn't. You know, it's one or 100. You're going to see the same finding here as far as number of proposed adjustments. You know, but I guess I'll just preface that with, you know, I guess I don't have the exact number of entries from 2019 to 2020, but I feel confident it was, you know, equal or lesser than the year before. I mean, Al and his staff and Lisa and the rest of that group, I know they want to, when there are, you know, any adjustments that are required, they will understand what they are, why they were needed, and then try and correct those items for future financial periods. And so, yeah, you know, it's a, definitely a cost-benefit scenario where, yeah, we're not going to, you know, in most cases, unless there's a real shortcoming or, or issue, you know, the, you know, it wouldn't be to the caliber of issue where we would suggest additional staff or anything like that to try and, you know, combat the specific issue. I mean, we're very focused on internal controls during the course of the audit, you know, as it relates to financial reporting, but even more so just day-to-day controls and operational items where the city could be, you know, have any items that could lead to other issues, and we're very in tune to that. And this would not be an issue where we would require any additional hiring or action other than just, you know, as many, as many hands and eyes on as, as possible with, you know, the, the staff and, and controls that are currently in place, so.
Any other questions? Seeing no mics turn on, what is your pleasure?
Move that we approve the annual financial reports.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on the audit? All right, Al, we'll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Graham, for coming tonight and presenting the audit and keeping Al honest. Al's always honest, have to tease him, but appreciate that. And Al, appreciate you and your department for all the work that you do to be able to hear good audits that come before the commission. So thanks for that. Number two, under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-159 recommending approval of resolution 22-41, which is the creation of a tax incremental district, number 12, to be located on the following described property. And that's lots one through three in black one of Mead's addition, as shown on the associated City of Yankton TID number 12 map. This is all in the City of Yankton. And this TID is going to help with the funding of the infrastructure necessary to prepare the Mead addition for economic development. Just a reminder on the commission, this would be where Paradigm Technologies, that area out by there, and the soccer complex are coming together. Lots of dirt moving in that area. Before I ask what your pleasure is, I'm going to ask Mr. Mingo to walk us through, and I know Mr. Morris is here as well, to be able to address the commission tonight on walking us through what this means. So I'll turn over to Dave.
Thank you. And since the last time I forgot, I'll start with this and tell you that the recommendation from the planning commission earlier this evening was that the proposed tax increment district be approved. So last time when I, when I had this discussion, I went through my whole explanation and forgot to tell you what the recommendation was. TID number 12 is, is a little bit different than, than other tax increment districts that, that you've considered in that, that the increment that will be generated is not expected to be, cover 100% of the costs associated with a project. It is simply one component of the funding for the, for the project, and the project would be all the site grading, construction of stormwater management facilities, street construction of First Dakota Drive and 33rd Street, and also some drainage changes that needs to occur on the north side of 33rd Street that we're working through the state with, because there's a reconfiguration of a culvert there. It would also include a northbound turning lane, left turn lane on Broadway Avenue. So those are all the, the, the projects that are associated with, with the tax increment district, multiple sources of funding, as I mentioned, in addition to the increment being available to provide assistance with that funding over the 20-year lifespan. We also received a grant, a local infrastructure improvement grant that was associated with a Paradigm project. We'll also have the city commission and the budget you approved, also has some items in the CIP associated with this. There'll be some state revolving loan funding associated with, with components of this project. So lots of pieces to the puzzle. In the past, when you've looked at, at tax increment districts and tried to measure whether they succeeded or not, it is a little different perspective because you're always shooting for 100% of increment reimbursement over 20 years to cover the entirety of a project. This project, 25 or 30% of the total project costs generated from the increment over 20 years would be considered a success because we have state ground on the north side of the infrastructure, and we have the land committed to the soccer association on the west side of First Dakota Drive. So we don't have the opportunity to capture increment from, from those sites. So that's, therein lies the reason there's multiple funding sources associated with the project with the capital improvements plan. With that, Mr. Morris is in the audience here and can answer detailed questions about the plan, as, as the mayor mentioned. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions also.
If there are no questions from the commission, what is your pleasure?
I have a question. The, the document talks about, this is in relation The document talks about, this is in relation to how the school district is impacted by this. So in their special education fund, the school district actually has the option of how they want to request their monies, whether it's through a levy or they can just, you know, directly state the dollar amount. What has the school district typically done in the past when it comes to these tax increment districts here in Yankton?
That's a great question that the planning commission posed also, and neither Toby or I had an answer to it other than, Toby, if you want to, want to assist too, other than we haven't been contacted by Jason or Dr. Kendall, Jason Beath or Dr. Kendall, with any concerns or issues associated with how our tax increment districts have moved forward. So I, I would assume that we would have had that conversation if there was any concern.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the commission, Toby Morris. Yeah, that is correct. So the, the school district within its special ed can request a dollar amount or up to an amount not to exceed, I believe it's like a dollar forty, so they manage that every year in terms of what their needs are, if they have any extraordinary costs or so forth on that. And so just for full disclosure, we do put that in the TIF plan, that it, could it impact? Yes, but when you look at the amount of valuation in here, to the total valuation of the school district, it's a minimal impact at the very best.
Toby, while you're up there, are there any unique characteristics of this proposal that you think we should be aware of?
No, I think it's very straightforward. It's common within South Dakota to see cities take on these kind of development projects. You know, the state is classified it as economic development, you have the recruitment of a new company, but you also have the quality of life as you mix the two together between the soccer field and the, the new business that'll be going in.
The language that's used in the document here, it also, it just states outright that the city's soccer complex will receive a rejuvenation from these developments. How exactly do you define rejuvenation?
Well, I think if you look at it now in terms of, there's nothing there, and what you're going to have is what I would view, and as a person from Pierre, I'm a little bit jealous, of a destination soccer complex. So that's how I would look at it as, you had land that had zero value on it. Now you're going to increase that value with the company that's coming in, but you're also, I think, going to have a great quality of life amenity.
On that note, I will make a motion to approve the proposal.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other commission discussion? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission on this agenda item? Oh, yes. Come on up, Wes.
Wes Chambers, I represent the Yankton Youth Soccer Association. I know this is about economic development, but the soccer side of this equation has got a huge economic development impact, and I just wanted to share a couple of quick statistics with you. So we're going to bring in on an annual basis, just to the three tournaments we hold, we're going to bring in about 1,800 out-of-town families, and that impact is in Yankton. So those people are hotels, restaurants, all of that stuff. This past weekend, this town was full of people just hanging out at our outdoor tournament that we had going on. So a massive economic impact. We've got totals, the annual impact's about 3.2 million just from the activity that we have with soccer in Yankton. So we want to stress that we do have quite a bit of economic impact as well as you consider this request. And then lastly, I just wanted to compliment the commission while I'm in front of you to, you guys are focused on the right initiatives in this community, and you're moving us forward in the right direction on the big stuff. I know there's a lot of little stuff you battle with that draws on people's heartstrings, but you're working on the big rocks that are moving this community forward, so I wanted to make sure, when I had an opportunity, I wanted to say that, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes. All right, any other, anybody else in the public? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Shram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number three, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-160 recommending approval of memorandum of understanding between the City of Yankton and Yankton Thrive regarding a tax, regarding the Yankton Tax Incremental District number 11. And before I ask for your pleasure, I will ask, Dave, since he so appropriately stayed at the microphone to walk us through the MOU and what all of the roles are defined in this.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. We, this relates to the Gale Drive area tax increment district number 11, that the plan was previously approved a month or so ago. And so we had mentioned at that point in time that there would be a document, a contract coming forward that would further define the relationship between the City of Yankton and Yankton Thrive and how the project was going to move forward. This is a bit of a hybrid tax increment district in that it's not entirely private developer-driven like, like some of the others we've seen in the past. Not only is Yankton Thrive our development partner in the community, but there's some funding that's being used as a part of this project that wouldn't be available if it wasn't for the city being the project manager, sponsor. There's some grant money involved, there's some SRF money involved also. So the city's playing a little bit larger role than typical for a, for a standard private development, and as such, we reflected that in the memorandum of understanding. Number five in the MOU, if you scroll down to the beginning of the second page, those three bullet points pretty much are, are the meat and potatoes of the proposal. Thrive agrees to provide the half a million dollars within 180 days after the prime contractor's been given notice to proceed. Thrive also has paid for, or is in the process of paying for, a significant amount of preliminary engineering. The city shall retain 60% of the increment as it's received coming in, since both Thrive and the city will have debt associated with the project. The city shall remit the other 40% of that total increment to Thrive within 45 days of being received. And over time, and we anticipate this tax increment district to be successful and fully realize its potential within its 20-year lifetime, Thrive's original $500,000 is also eligible for remittance as a part of their 40%. So if there's specific questions, we have folks from Thrive here, we have Toby Morris also here who helped us with, with this project also. I'd be willing to try and answer anything I could also.
Other questions from the commission? All right, with that, then, what is your pleasure?
I move the, I make the motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
I would just like to state generally, I'm a big fan of memorandums of understanding. This is very well-written, it's succinct, easy to understand, well-done. I'd just like to add too that this project is, not only is it impactful to the initial magnitude project, but this is an artery to the future growth of Yankton, and I think it's just a huge, a huge potential for Yankton to grow that side of town. So it's a great example of collaboration with Thrive.
Correct, and Commissioner Benson, City Manager Leon, and I sit on the Thrive Board, and it was a unanimous decision by the Thrive Board to enter into this memorandum of understanding too. So should it be approved after a vote, I do thank the Thrive Board and, and all the work that they did to enter into a partnership with us, because as, as has been said by Commissioner Shram, this is a great example of those partnerships that allow our, our city to continue to grow and provide other opportunities for businesses and, and expansion. So. Any other comments from the commission? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this?
Good evening. Nancy Winandy, 1205 Peyton Lane. And as CEO of Yankton Thrive, I just wanted to publicly express my thanks to city staff. There is a lot of work that has gone into this project, and it is great to have professionals to work with to put a quality MOU and a quality TID together, so we really can do all the things that you're talking about of growing and continuing to develop the community. I also wanted to thank Stockwell Engineering. We've spent a lot of time down in their office working on this plan, and it's just great to have so many partners right here in Yankton to keep our dollars local. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Nancy. Anybody else? With that, roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Shram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Continuing on and talking about that area, we will move on to number four, which is consideration of memorandum 22-164 regarding, regarding an agreement with Stockwell for the Gale Drive area infrastructure. This is for construction administration, project survey, and inspection. Before you tonight, that is in the amount of $563,422. I'm going to ask Amy and Dave to just walk us a little bit through this before I ask for what you'd like to do.
Okay, here we go. Honorable Mayor and members of the commission and public, as discussed with the TID number 11, which is that Gale Drive TID, Yankton city staff will be taking the role as the project sponsor and, and construction manager because of the grant and loan funding involved. That includes completing construction of Gale Drive between Furtig Avenue and Whiting Drive, new sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main, and roadway infrastructure. The sanitary sewer will connect to the existing sewer main on the south side of Highway 50 and then commence north to Whiting Drive, which, that's that pipeline to the future, I think is what Commissioner Shram said, or growth to future, pipeline to future growth, which is very exciting. Attached in your packet is the proposal for professional services with Stockwell Engineers. This morning I told Adam, it's so they can draw it, right? And he was a little nervous about me presenting that, but, you know, Stockwell does a lot of great work for us, and so this is for them to design all those parts, portions of infrastructure for us. The proposal includes their construction administration as well, project survey, inspection, et cetera. The cost of those services included in the proposal is, as Mayor Moser said, $563,422. Those are TID-eligible expenses, so that's good to know, so that's something that you can actually charge to the TID. The reason why we're not doing this in staff, of course, is because it is such a large scope of project, and we have local projects that we have already committed to, and this is certainly something that we need to, to work on with our, our friends with Stockwell. So if you have specific questions about the engineering, Stockwell's here. If you have questions about how this fits into the TID, Dave is here, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have as well.
I think being that our MOU puts a partnership between the City of Yankton and Thrive, I would point out that Stockwell Engineers is also a member of Thrive as well, so, in good city partners, so I just wanted to mention that as well. Questions from the commission?
How soon do we expect work to begin on this project as well as the north project we just talked about?
Potential for, for both projects to actually begin yet this year. The Mead project might be a little bit, from a construction standpoint, ahead of this one. Is that a fair statement, Eric? Yeah. We're hoping to get dirt work done up there through the winter months, if we can get the state easement in place. This one's probably going to be more like next spring/summer. And there are significantly more phases associated with this because of that sewer line crossing. There's going to be potentially different contracting companies and subcontractors involved because that sewer line's got to go all the way under the railroad tracks and State Highway 50, and that's a pretty big undertaking to get that connection in
Other questions from the commission? All right, seeing no other questions coming before us, what is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. Is there any further commission discussion? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission on this? Roll call.
Shram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks to Stockwell and for your work that you've done so far and your continued work in support of our initiatives here in the community. So look forward to seeing designs coming out of all that fun stuff going on out there. All right. Number five, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-166 regarding change order number one for Westside Park Pond improvements. This is in the amount of $135,452.08. And so I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Leon to kind of walk us through how we got there and what it's being requested for.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the commission. You do have before you a change order for the Westside Park Pond project. If you've driven by, you can see we are well underway. What our contractor has found is some soft spots, particularly around the island, which couldn't have been known upon, you know, initial investigation. So they've required some extra excavation, particularly around the area that will be the viewing platform, as well as some additional material. So you have the breakdown there of what that will require. The change order for the project is $135,452.08. I do want to point out that the contractor did offer us to scale back on the project and not include the viewing platform as a way to stay within the budget, so, you know, that is something that you can talk about if you'd like. However, staff felt that that viewing platform was one of the, you know, big aspects of the project that we'd really like to include into the aesthetics of the project, and so that's why the recommendation is written as it is. Also, just so the, you and the public know, I think I did mention it to you, as we talk about some of these items pertaining to Westside Park, our 2022 budget was approximately 1.5 million for all the Westside Park, Westside Park improvements. When we go back, went back through to create the 2023 budget, we always go back through our current projects and, and work on, you know, what are our actuals and where we're thinking things are going to cost more. Well, certainly midway this year, we got really nervous about inflation and materials costs and things like that, so many of our construction projects, we changed the estimates. So we do have more money in, in the Westside Park budget than the initial 1.5. I just don't have any authority to spend it without your approval. So that's where, why I mentioned to you in, in my weekly review that we do have money in the budget for this, should you choose to approve it. So again, Stockwell's is here if you would like to talk more specifically about the conditions at the Westside Park Pond, otherwise I'm happy to answer questions that you or the public may have.
I quoted this agenda item on Friday during our media briefing to the renovating of an old house. Sometimes you just don't know what you're going to find until you dig in and, and take out some walls. I would have a question in that, obviously we had an island there, putting the island back. Is it just the repurposing of the island that, that made those soft, I mean, obviously the soft, soft spots were always there, or was it just more of how we're now making that island safe and to be able to put the monster block or whatever we're doing on it to support that? What caused this versus the island we had before? I'm just curious on that.
This is David Locke, everyone, from Stockwell Engineering. You may recognize him from the Luther Family Aquatic Center project or Walnut.
He's all things water, I guess, and fun in town.
Right, exactly, exactly. Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. So the, the previous island, the retaining wall that was out there didn't go as far down, and I think that's, you know, part of the reason why we're here now replacing it. And... Um, and so as we went further down, the soils did not give way to anything that was better in condition. And with it being an island, there was no way to get equipment out there to do any soil boardings prior to having a contractor onsite to do the excavation. Some areas, the soil was close to our excavation limit, the, the good soil was close to our excavation limits and so we didn't have to go as deep. Other areas, we dug eight feet down and still didn't find anything. So this was a good compromise in the middle, uh, to have a sound project, uh, and product that'll stand the test of time, so to speak, um, without obviously trying to go all the way down to the center of the earth, so.
Awesome. Other questions? All day, who's at the mic?
So we know that there are soft spots. Will you just talk about for the public's, we have little maps and things that we can see, but will you talk about the process of repair? How does that work? Like, what is the concept? Is it backfill, is that what it's called?
So the, the, the poor soils are the fine alluvium, so it's kind of really soft soils that you would associate with like a riverbank. Um, and we want to get down to soils that are able to structurally hold the wall because we don't want it to collapse or fail. This is a significant investment for the park. Uh, and as you could see from the previous wall, that started to slough and had issues. We don't want that, uh, to happen again. And so we need to get down to a soil that'll be able to support, uh, the weight of the wall and we just weren't finding that. And so what we're able to do is go down, uh, a certain distance and have that filled up with crushed rock, which once we get to the elevation of the wall, that crushed rock and the additional geo grid reinforcing that's there is able to support the weight of the wall and kind of the water that's against it, the ground that's behind it. Um, and so we don't have concerns, uh, with that failing in the future.
Thanks. Other questions? I know we haven't had a motion yet, but I just, as long as you're at the mic, I didn't know if anybody else had questions. We'll wait for you to sit down and then we'll have another question. No, I'm just teasing. Did you have a question for?
I don't have a question for David, but I, I do want to make a motion that we improve this change order and then I have some thoughts I wanted to share. So everyone take a deep breath, it's going to take a while, sorry. Uh, so this change order is the first of three decisions we're going to make tonight in regards to Westside Park improvements. And, um, the other ones that we're can, going to consider is a bid award for the labyrinth and the McVeigh family sundial and reflection garden, as well as additional cost related to restoring the north side of the park to green space after historic structures were removed. So my comments here are going to encompass all three of those decisions since I think they're related. And in short, I hope that we approve all of them. I was a part of the meetings we had as, uh, with the public to create a new master plan for Westside Park. We had great participation and enthusiasm. As this project has progressed, we have seen a lot of attention paid to it, some positive, some negative. What's happening to the fish? What's happening to the ducks? And none of us have forgotten the difficult decision we had to make regarding the tree on the island. So this incredible emotional response we've seen to every action taken has reinforced to me how important this park is to the community. The pond, the island, the ducks, the castle, these are things that we can list off as components of the park, but they have become much more than that because of the place they occupy in people's memories. It is the park where children, myself included, came during, uh, school trip to have a picnic. The island is where someone's father taught them to fish. The pond is where someone fed the ducks after a grandchild was born at the hospital. In this way, these simple park components are mixed in with memory and nostalgia and inhabit a magical place in the hearts of many community members. I think that intense love has been why it has been hard for some people to let go of the park as it was. For some, it's been traumatic to watch the park being ripped up, the ducks being removed and especially for the tree to be cut down. It's been an assault upon their memories. For me personally, and I think for many of us on the commission and on the city staff, uh, this has been frustrating, a frustrating process for us. And why? Because we felt like we were doing what the community asked us to do, uh, with the vision that they helped us create with the master plan. We were and I hope still are excited about it. And as part of the planning we did, we had to accept the fact that in order for the park to have a new life, parts of it must be pruned. We didn't take into account the emotional toll this would have on some people. This really dawned on me during a group discussion that I was having with a presentation sister last week about change and loss. What we have experienced with this project came to mind and that conversation helped me to better understand the, the community dialogue that's happened around this project. What has also made clear to me is that we absolutely need to do this project right so that in time, as people become acquainted with the changes in the park, they will grow to love them. With luck, they might even think that they make the park better than it was before we began these improvements. I don't want the legacy of this project to be that we cut down a tree. If we do this right, we will have created a fresh palette upon which people can paint new experiences, new memories and in time more nostalgia. So after all those words, let's get down to the numbers. Because of the rising costs, since our 22, 2022 budget was adopted in September 2021, as Amy, uh, said earlier, staff estimated the project would possibly require a $1.75 million investment to complete rather than $1.5 million. Um, fortunately, the low bid for the Westside Park improvements was only $1,162,000 or $110,000. Now we have before us a $135,452 and eight cent change order due to these unforeseen soil conditions, so that puts the total at 1.297, uh, 562.08, if you're, if you want to do the exact math. Um, so in our next agenda item, we will consider the award for the labyrinth and the McVeigh family sundial and reflection garden. Uh, this is where the Sisters of the Sacred Heart Monastery and the McVeigh family donated $275,000. The base bid for the alternate add-on is $282,564. That means that the city would have to pick up another $7,564 to bring the full vision for that improvement to life. This feature will be unlike anything else we have in the community and as someone who appreciates the meditative qualities of labyrinth, I believe that it will be a, a place of reflection and healing that the community will treasure. If we approve that, it will bring our total park expenditures to $1,305,162 and eight cents. Finally, we are being asked to add another $2,775 and 13 cents to restore the property to green space after all the MEED building structures were removed from the north side of the park. Even if we add the original $10,000 that we previously approved to come out of our triple B budget, um, to that and use 12,700, are you keeping up Charlie? I, I see you're taking notes. $775 and 13 cents. I, I know you're checking my math here. Uh, as a number, we are at a total of $1,317,901, so well below the 1.5 million dollar, uh, 1.5 million dollars originally budgeted and the 1.7 million dollars that staff estimated we might have to pay for the project. So because of this, I would actually propose that we pay for this, uh, additional, uh, $2,775 expenditure out of our Westside Park project budget line and not the triple B when we get to that point. Um, it's true that we could see more change orders before the project is completed, but we still have more than a $180,000 cushion to accommodate those surprises. Thank you for your patience this evening.
Commissioner Johnson, before you start reading your statement, I do believe you made a motion?
I did.
Okay.
Second.
I was going to get to that.
Yep, we do now officially have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion?
Um, I suppose this might be a question for City Manager. So which components of the master plan have we not followed through on? And I know we also talked about, you know, the Artesian well as well, that, um, that we have not yet addressed that, um, very important part of the park itself. And so I know there's monies that are going to have to go towards making sure that that's, um, in good, stable working order for years to come. But can you just refresh my memory? What are the things that are not happening that were originally envisioned in that master plan?
Yes, so not happening or not happening yet, one of the items was to perhaps consider moving of the skateboard park. We talked about that in the master plan. I think since we've talked with, uh, some of the skateboard folks about doing improvements that's part of the plan or the vision that probably will be, uh, re-envisioned and, and not change. Uh, they're making some improvements, uh, this fall, in fact, in location. We've talked about and planned for, uh, resurfacing the tennis courts with the pickleball, um, group. So they're going to put forth some, uh, funds and in your budget this evening, earlier you approved, um, funds as well. It was, I believe, a 50/50 match with the pickleball folks to do some resurfacing of the courts. So we intend to do that in 2023 as part of the, um, master planning project. The master plan project had a component of, uh, potential of, uh, of either a four or three season building, uh, pavilion or, or rentable building. Uh, that still can be part of the vision. Probably would, um, need to have a gift or, uh, an, you know, community initiative behind that to foresee that happen. Uh, one of the things we, uh, also talked about was trail and active transportation, uh, planning and as a part of the Westside Park Plan, Master Plan, uh, one of your, um, 2022 active transportation planning projects is sidewalk in Westside Park that will be included in this project. If the labyrinth and meditative garden project is approved, there will be some connections made there. We also talked about either a, um, remodel or a rebuild of the comfort station that's in Westside Park area. That's, uh, still operable, but maybe not ideal or not, doesn't maybe meet the expectations of what folks would like to have in the comfort station, so that's a piece of the puzzle. Um, we talked about playground equipment improvements and, uh, Todd and his staff were able to receive a grant. And so the playground equipment, we believe, as soon as we receive it, um, we need to get some, uh, help locally from, um, contractor and partner with the park staff to be able to get that installed, but that should be installed this fall. Uh, we also talked about, um, potential of sort of active stations around the trail for activity. I think early on, we talked about, uh, maybe, you know, the places where you pause and do your cal, what I call calisthenic exercises. Um, and that was kind of answered or, um, nodded to by the Bourne Learning Trail that, uh, we were in partnership with. United Way, um, is that correct Todd or United, United Way on, on building? So, so I wouldn't say we're done with the master plan. I would say we're, um, moving through it and then it's kind of evolved and changed a bit, so it won't look exactly like, um, was initially envisioned, but it's kind of like all our plans, living and breathing. I think you had another question about the well. Continued to talk with Adam and Adam continues to talk with, uh, uh, our folks, uh, I don't know the name of the vendor, uh, who will be working on our Artesian well. Uh, the first fill of the Westside Park Pond will be with city water and that would happen, uh, regardless of whether the well was working the way, uh, we would like it to or not, uh, because, uh, my understanding, and this is where I might need a little bit of help from engineers, but my understanding is that they want it to fill all equally at the same time, get everything compacted, um, make sure that they, the liner is all compacted in the same way with the same weight on it. Uh, and, and, um, initially that's how we would perform, uh, that type of fill, um, regardless of, of the operation of the well. However, that said.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but David is creeping towards the mic.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you sneak over there. Well, how was I doing?
You were doing a great job. You were doing a great job.
I got my degree at school mines.
As, as, yes, so as the clay liner is installed, it needs to stay at a, um, optimum moisture content so that we don't end up with cracks. And so as it's compacted and installed, it needs to be kept at a certain moisture content. And then once it's completed, we need, we want to fill it up to, I guess, keep it moist so we don't end up with large cracks that would happen from the material drying out. So, yes, you were correct.
That's what I was saying. So, um, however Kyle does have, uh, you know, ongoing communications to track in the progress of the project because we'd like to get that, uh, maintenance done on the well as soon as the contract is complete or nearly thereafter, um, uh, depending upon where, when and where when, when and how winter blows and that we believe we can pay for, if you'd like to pay for it out of this project, you can. It also, uh, because it's a well, can fall into, um, maintenance as well, a maintenance line item in, in the water department. So, um, that's also an opportunity. So I think that, um, probably what will happen, much like's going to happen with our active transportation plan, is we're going to have to go back and revisit the master plan, uh, with all the players, with you commissioners and with the community and say, okay, we've come, uh, what was the ad? We've come a long way, baby, and now where else do we want to go and what's changed? Um, so that's as I see it, where we are in that process.
So everything that you've, uh, mentioned here then, do you feel comfortable that we've properly, um, I suppose, forecasted for that in our current capital improvements? Basically, are we setting ourselves up to help fulfill that master plan in the year and years to come?
Yes, and, and I say that with thought because I don't think that we have enough resources to, um, be able to put all those eggs in one proverbial basket. So, um, of course, it's always up to the commission and the community and, and what you all find is our best way forward. Um, you know, we couldn't build half an aquatic center, I get that. But could have we done a lot more in Memorial Park? Absolutely. You know, I feel like we have done a lot of focus on, on Westside Park these last year or two. Uh, this is just my opinion, by the way. If, if there's more effort put forward by the community where something else in Westside Park wants to, they would like to develop, those things will be brought to you as well. And, and then if, if you as commissioners, um, in speaking with the community feel that that's something you want to move towards, then, then we probably will continue with more focus. I think there's other areas, um, and other sports needs in other parks, uh, that we should probably look to as well because we just don't have enough resources within, um, our own coffers to be able to do everything we'd like to do. We just, we just don't have that. So if you would ask my opinion, I would say, I think, you know, once we make these improvements, um, barring any additional gifts or additional, uh, initiatives from the community in Westside Park, we should turn our attention towards some other quality of life area.
And speaking of gifts, we don't have any naming rights associated with this viewing platform that was talked about?
We do not. Uh, the naming right, uh, or the, uh, gift, um, was with, associated with the bridge, which was from Avera Sacred Heart Hospital. Um, that is something that's always available and we're always willing to talk to partners. You know, if, if somebody would like to visit with us, we do have a naming rights policy regarding, uh, naming rights. Also, some folks just want to give gifts. Um, so, uh, whether it's in this park or, or something else in another park that folks would like to participate in or, or company entities, we're happy to visit about those.
Oh, I saw David going back to the microphone. Oh, no. Oh, I thought you were interested.
Although, uh, good question though. We would like to say change order one and done and we won't see any more coming in front of us. Can you give us an update on the rest of the construction project and does it, does it seem like the rest of what's going on there for now? We won't hold you to it, uh, obviously, I know better than that, but just a status on how you see the construction besides this one change order going in the park?
Yeah, so, um, with this, it'll be good, we'll be able to kind of come up out of the ground. So, um, you can, if you drive by, you see the concrete pads poured around the island, started the excavation and build back for the viewing platform. So, um, once the, once we have the concrete pad poured for the viewing platform, you're going to start to see those, those blocks will go up pretty quick. Um, so you'll see that. Uh, the, uh, abutments are being poured and the bridge last. The abutments are being poured, and the bridge, last we'd heard, was supposed to be here in the next few weeks, so that should be on time. And so that should be good. I think it's going to, things are going to move a lot faster now. There's some more excavation that needs to happen in the center of the pond, but doesn't make sense right now from a sequencing standpoint, just so that way we've got good access out to the island. So I think you'll start to see a lot more happening. It's always hard to see with all the stuff below ground, and you're like, oh, it doesn't look like there's a lot happening. But once, I think you're going to start to see some vertical change here very shortly. So.
Awesome. All right, other commission questions, discussion?
At what point was the, was the contractor name changed from LT, LT Companies to, I guess it's LT Companies Doing Business as Parkway Construction?
I do not-
Why would they change that midstream?
I do not know why they would change that midstream. I can find that information out for you. I know sometimes we deal with corporations that, or LLCs, that change partners, and then they change name. I don't know the circumstances with this particular individual, but I can certainly find that out for the commission.
Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? All right, lots of good discussion around this. We do have a motion and a second on, in front of the commission to approve change order number one in the amount of $135,452.08. Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
No.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye.
Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-162 regarding the bid award for the McVeigh Family Reflection Garden. And I would ask City Manager Leon to walk us through this before I ask for your pleasure.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. We only received one bid for the labyrinth and McVeigh Family Sundial Reflection Garden project. This part, project, as you know, consists of some new features at Westside Park with primarily donated funds, donated funds of $275,000, donors being the Benedictine Sisters as well as the Mike and John McVeigh family. The base bid for the project improvements includes a meditative garden, the labyrinth walkway, a sundial, benches and landscaping. The alternative in the bid was, that was also included, is lighting and associated electric components inside the labyrinth and garden area. So of course, the sundial isn't going to work when we need the lighting, because it'll be dark, but we would like, you know, we thought it would be important part of the project to include lighting so folks can utilize this, the labyrinth after hours as well, also as a safety feature, too. So Parkway Construction out of T., South Dakota, was the, was the loan bid. The base bid came in at $232,454, with the alternate number one coming in at $50,110. The estimate was a bit lower than that from the engineer's estimate, $225,000, and the alternate was a little bit higher than that at $60,000. You know, while we look at those estimates and, and consider them sort of as a guide for us, I do want to say that our estimates have been very close in many projects, given the type of environment we're in. I mean, things are changing, my understanding, sometimes daily when it comes to costs in terms of product and mobilization, et cetera. So those were the estimates. The estimate total then was $285,000. The specifications were met by the bidder, and of course, that's where we get to that number of $7,554 above the engineer base bid and $9,890 below for the alternate bid. The total then, base bid plus alternate, is at $282,564, which is below the total engineer's estimate. Stockwell, again, is our engineers, they're familiar with this contractor's work. We are recommending this be awarded, the, the base bid as well as the alternate. That, of course, is the commission's purview, and I do want to be transparent about the fact that initially, when we went into this project, we hoped that the entirety would be covered by the gifts, and there would not be any need for public dollars to be spent on this portion of the project. I have contacted the two folks, the two entities that were gifting and, and told them that, you know, the project has come in higher, so that they are aware of that, that, you know, it is higher, and that doesn't fall into the scope of project. We did cut a lot out of the project, out of the initial project and initial vision to try to make it fit what their gifts were. I think we fell a bit into timing. You have a couple of choices. You can award the bid as recommended, you can award the base with no alternative, you can reject the bids and not award anything. You can, you know, you can table it, however, the bids are only good for 30 days, so tabling it, in effect, would be not awarding a bid. And I would anticipate that if this were to be bid again, you would see even higher costs. So that wouldn't, I don't think it's the nature of not having enough bidders or bad estimates or anything like that. I just think that this market is volatile, and this is our, in my opinion, our best chance to get this project done in a timely fashion. So to me, it will boil down to if the commission does want to put some public dollars into this project, and if you feel that this is, you know, an improvement or an amenity that you would like to have. Happy to answer any more questions if I can.
Thank you for walking the commission through that, so we all understand the numbers and dollar signs. With that, if there's no other questions, what is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to accept the bid award as presented, assuming that is with both the base and the alternative. Just double checking with both of you, thank you. Any further commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this bid award?
Are there any concerns?
Sorry, I don't mean to point, Brian, but we are recording the meeting, so it does need to go into the microphone. Thank you.
I understand. Brian Birch, 3013 Mulligan Drive. Just for the floral garden, if you will, that portion of it, have we considered, or have you considered cameras and anything like that in terms of potential vandalism and so forth? Or does that need to be consideration?
We did talk about that. We were talking about cameras in a lot of our facilities. Vandalism is a concern. It's not included in this design. That's certainly something that, if the commission would like, it's not included in this bid or design, but could be something that's included. It's difficult to, to start to talk about all the cameras we would need in all the spaces, but that definitely is something that could be considered. Also, your question, sir, reminded me of the fact that I should tell the commission that, you know, we don't anticipate change orders for this project either, we don't plan for those, that could happen. So as you're weighing your decision, you should know that as well. Something like cameras, if that's something that you would like to add, add into the project, we can certainly get estimates for that as well, if that's something that the commission is interested in. We'd be happy to look into that as well.
I thought maybe Chief Foot would just, like, move to the park or something and live there. No? Okay. Send. You would have to get a permit for that, sir. All right.
Where are we at on the skate park improvements?
Skate park improvements, we are working with, we've worked with, oh, no, I just had it on the tip of my tongue. Matt Evans, thank you. Now, it came in from, from the side. We're working with Matt Evans and his group. They're raising funds to help match the $10,000, I believe, that the commission approved. Todd, is that the correct amount? The $10,000 that the commission approved for some, for some amenity improvements. We hope to have those installed before the snow flies, so we're shooting for October. I believe they're working with, we're working with a company on the east side of town that helped make our picnic tables. Todd, help me out. Oak Creek, thank you, to make some of those things a little bit more cost effective for us. So that is planned improvement. Working with groups is, is one thing that we enjoy doing, we just are not always on the same timelines, and especially when we're working with gifts. And so sometimes the timelines that we project get a little way late, way late by things in their own lives, but we're still planning to move forward with them.
I think, you know, I used to be on the museum board, and they had troubles with vandalism up in that area, because it's, there's just not a lot of supervision up there. So it's probably worthwhile looking into some security cameras for that part of the park, between our skate park investments and the sundial and all that.
I would say we have vandalism, unfortunately, in all our public places and spaces, and that's unfortunate.
All right, other commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number, number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-167 regarding an agreement between the state of South Dakota and the city of Yankton for Taxway A Project. This is basically an agreement of who pays what, outlining 90% federal, 5% state and 5% city. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the commission? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. And number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-165 regarding the Westside Park Territorial Museum Heritage Building Removal Billing. As the commission is aware, $10,000 was designated out of BBB to pay to offset the cost of moving those buildings due to the, what was left and what needed to be cleaned up. That bill actually came in at $12,775.13, so that's a $2,775.13 overage on that. So before you tonight is, obviously, we already voted to approve the bill, to pay the bill, we do need to pay the bill, but what is the commission discussion on the $2,775.13 overage? If you do make a motion tonight to go ahead and pay that, please indicate what funds you want that paid from.
Make motion that we pay for it out of the Westside Park Improvement Fund.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second in front of the commission to pay the $2,775.13 overage out of the Westside Park Improvement Funds. Is there any commission discussion?
Suppose some clarification then. So what we actually authorized as a city commission was to use $10,000 of funds out of the BBB to move buildings.
Correct.
Which did happen.
Correct.
So what we are going to do, it sounds like, as part of this motion, though, is we're going to spend $10,000 to clean up out of the BBB.
Correct, and if I'm understanding the motion, also an additional $2,755.13 out of the Westside Park project to also clean up, because that bill came in higher than $10,000.
So then my question, I guess, for discussion would just be, why wouldn't we pay the entirety out of Westside Park compared to any coming out of the BBB at this point? And, and I would go back to just my original concerns, which is moving buildings. I didn't see that necessarily as a BBB-type expense. I really don't see cleanup as a BBB-type expense. But if the opportunity here tonight is that we instead fund the entirety out of the Westside Park funding, I don't see why we wouldn't do that.
Yet that's up to the, entirely up to the commission, it doesn't make any difference to, to us, other than you'd need an amended motion.
I'm, I'm fine with that, and I would amend my motion to reflect that.
And I would still second that. Okay, sorry, I just had to double check. I assume since the amended, the amendment was changed by the original folks that made a motion, we can vote just on that, so we don't have to vote on the amendment. So that would be then taking the full $12,775.13 of the bill to move the buildings and clean up out of the Westside Improvement, Westside Park Improvement Project. I'm looking at a jiggy, okay. Want to make sure I got that right for the minutes? Any other commission discussion?
I would just like to ask also, so we, we are not, we're not giving then the, the MEED technically any money to help then move the buildings, correct? Is there, is there any stomach to give them something to help with actually have moved those buildings?
I suppose that could be something that we would discuss as part of a separate agenda item at a future meeting, if that would be a request that they would still want to make to us. That'd just be my two cents.
I can, I'm told Crystal I'd follow up with her regarding what happens here, so I'll follow up with her, and then we can talk about their project and where they are at. I still think they have a couple things, other things to move yet, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Mr. Sarda, good to see you here tonight.
Address, please.
Dave Sarda, Mayor and Commissioner, thank you for everything. But there's three items that have come up for the Westside Park, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Johnson for the words he put forth, because a lot of memories go into that park, the fishing and feeding the ducks. So thank you for that, it's a good reminder for all of us.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else in the public want to address the commission on this? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number five under the agenda is other business, and there is no other business in front of the city commission tonight, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting of September 12, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, folks.
Chief Foot, are you sore?
Me too. Me too. I didn't think I did that much. I'm sore.
No.
Well, it didn't help me at all, so. Evidently, it worked well.